As I go to it. Being seven o'clock, I'm gonna bring the Dunbarton zoning, Dunbarton Board of Selectmen Meeting to order at seven o'clock. We have a full board present, and we have the town administrator, and Leo is taping a recording for the public. It can be seen on the town website.
Video link.
Yep. So, old business we have here is approval of the August sixth meeting minutes as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular minutes of August sixth as amended.
Okay, do I, motion's been made, do I have a second?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't at that meeting.
Okay, I'll second Mike's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cheeseball. It's not supposed to be fun.
It's not even, I just wanted to get to you.
I'm still gonna make you hold them.
Yeah, I'll put it over here.
Okay.
All that stuff right there.
All right, I'm gonna open up quickly to public comment, but I see most of the people here are on the agenda. Leo has nothing at this time, so I'm gonna go back to our new town business to go over. We have Randy Bauer and John Casey, they're trustees of the trust fund. And I'm gonna give this to these other two selectmen to read. It looks like they would like to add an alternate.
Correct.
To their list, so you guys have the floor if you wanna speak to it while they're looking at this paper.
Sure. I'm, uh, it's a new position for me, kinda just getting my feet wet. Lean has been tremendously instrumental in that process. We received a letter from Lean dated the fourth, and it was requesting that she be appointed as an alternate to the trustees. We discussed it at our meeting on the eighth, and, uh, and totally see the benefit of that. And by quorum, we decide, we made a motion to, to appeal to your board to have Lean appointed as an alternate to the trustee of the trust funds.
And how many members are on there now?
Three. There are three.
Can you tell me their names?
It's, uh, John Casey, Randy Bauer, and Roger Rice.
Okay.
Roger's been kind of absentee, which is one of the reasons that we really feel strongly that we need an alternate, because if, uh, if one of us were to be sick or away on vacation and an urgent matter came up, we wouldn't have a quorum. So, so it's kind of important that we, we do have one, and Lean is also so familiar with all of the processes that are involved in the town administration here, but I think, I can't see why it wouldn't be a benefit for us to have her on board.
Was Allison on this at one time?
No.
Okay. And Lean, I'm gonna ask you a question direct. Do you think there's any conflict of interest having you be a member on this board, being the town administrator also?
No, I think we inquired about this. Unfortunately, I was not able to find that email with NHMA, and there is no conflict for a town administrator to act upon the trustee.
I would let, just like to, uh, even if we vote on this tonight, I would just like to get confirmation from them back on that.
I've already sent that out, I just had not heard back from them.
The municipal association helps us with some legal counsel that's free to the town without going to our town attorney to look at some of this stuff and just make sure that there's no conflict of interest where you have somebody that's working on that paperwork day in and day out, and you guys are reviewing that paperwork. And of course, this just has the trust funds' interest in it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Can I see that again, Bob?
Sure. You could, uh, table it to the next meeting.
We could table it, or is there any activity that needs to be done quicker than our next meeting, which is in two weeks?
What do you think?
Well, as far as...
I mean, there's constantly, there's, there is business going on.
But she's already helping you with that anyway.
She is, she is helping us with it, but she cannot get into the system and do any hands-on without John or I here.
I don't have, um, I don't have any problem with waiting like the other selectmen have said until we get that back from, is that your consensus too long?
Yeah, I, I just table it, and then when we have a decision.
Yeah, and you won't have to come back, we have your, you know, your board's, uh...
Recommendation.
Recommendation. So, if that passes, we'll, uh, Lean will let you know at our next meeting.
Okay.
And we'll sign off on it.
Yeah, 'cause you don't have a meeting scheduled.
We had one the other day.
You had one the other day, so it'll be a while before your next meeting, but she can still help with the hands-on as she's been doing, correct?
Well, for the last two years, she's been helping me.
So, I mean, it's just not a big delay what happened to wait till our next meeting. Just so we were sure that we're doing the right, taking the right...
No, I don't, I don't think that there's any objection to that at all.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Well, I thank you guys for coming in, it helps explain what's going on here. Leo, did you have any questions before they left?
Nope.
Okay. He's been the only member of the public. Lean, did you have anything else you wanted to add about it?
No.
Okay.
The way we're doing this, the thing is, we just wanna be cautious. Sometimes we make decisions, sometimes wrong, and it's better to research it a little bit ahead of time and make sure we make a right decision.
And I did send out an email to NHMA immediately after our meeting so that, to get that answer, but for some reason, maybe the COVID-19, they're just not responding as quickly.
So, we've made decisions in the past, I've been on sport where we made decisions and had to take them back after the fact, because we found out we were doing something wrong.
Eating a little humble pie?
Yes.
Sometimes it's better to beg forgiveness than seek absolutes.
Right, but if there's nothing, there's nothing much going on.
No, you're right, no, you're right.
Bob and I never mind it as long as Mike was eating the pie.
And I have.
All right, all right, we'll just wait to hear from you guys, if you need anything else from us, you know, just, just let us know.
Appreciate that you guys helping out, stepping up and being trustees, thank you.
You're doing a great job.
All right, great.
All right, well, have a good evening.
Take some money on that fine.
I took care of it.
Thanks for coming in.
I'll be up in the morning, see if we can get me...
I'll be here eight o'clock.
Sounds good, thanks.
Okay.
The timber cut is on our next item on the agenda, so I guess we could flag them in from their conversation out there. I actually have the timber cut in this package here. I've had it in there on the planning board, selectmen's update to the planning board to let them know what was going on in the garden there, and, uh...
Hi, I've got Jeff Crossby.
Jeff's gonna have a meeting without us, huh?
Jeez. We hate to, Bob, here's another review, pull to our... That's helped mark with the spot where there was tree pushed over on the neighbor's land, like you saw, at least I've seen already. Okay, you guys were next on the subject, we're here to discuss the timber cut project at Dunbarton Elementary School and garden club members with the school board members present. We're pretty well adverse to this, because we've discussed it earlier, and you guys, at another meeting, and you guys had come in and actually proposed to us to get this work done, so we have a good idea of it. I think there was some additional five trees cut on the right side of the parking lot that we weren't aware of, and I think a lot of people weren't aware of that were gonna get cut.
So, let me jump in.
Okay.
The school board was approached by the garden club to expand the garden area out back. We met with Ken and Tom Cosano, Ken Curbin, Tom Cosano, Clem and I, and I think Owen, the principal was there.
Excuse me for a second, I saw Ken out there, does he want to come into the meeting or not?
We just, we just met with him.
Oh, you did, so he's all set?
Yeah. And talked in general terms about what we could do, couldn't do, they thought maybe on top of the old septic system, and we said, no, we'd rather stay out the septic system in case we have to tear that up for some reason, you don't wanna tear up some kids' tomatoes and get your septic system. So, we met again, I forget the date, and we came out there with some flagging, it was Clem and myself and Ken and Jeff Crosby, and we flagged about a dozen big pines that were in, kind of around the perimeter of the area that we had anticipated would be clear.
I understand it numbered eight, exactly eight when it came to us, they said the eight pines were identified.
Yeah, this, I mean, it may have been a dozen, you know, 'cause we were looking at, well, should we take this one too? Yeah, okay, let's flag that one, that kind of thing. But it was a localized area just behind the original septic system.
In a area 100 by 100, as we were told.
It's less than that.
Okay.
It might, well, no, it might have been more like, you know, 60 by 120 or something or something. And, um, so then, the, uh, after we flagged everything, we had an understanding of what that area was gonna be. When the cutters came in, some flagging got put up around a much larger perimeter, and the logger took out what is gone now, a lot of clear cutting in that area, about three times the area that we had anticipated it would be cut. While we were there with Jeff Crosby, we did talk about the trees on the other side of the parking lot, that it was our understanding that the logger was coming in with a crane and dropping these things down. We looked at those three and, and thought, well, you know, if you could take, if there's enough money in the budget to take those three along the edge, because they fall in the parking lot, that's a problem. And our anticipation was they'd be chopping them up, taking them down with a crane. They ended up cutting five, they dropped them and notched them towards the neighbor's property. They, the logger apparently was told that that's all the school, so they just went in and dropped it and ran over there with a skidder to bring the stuff out. As we know, it's not. The school district will now take care of dealing with Mr. McKean, 'cause it's the school district's problem. We're gonna work with the garden club on finding ways to remediate the large disturbed area that's back there, re-vegetate areas that aren't needed for, you know, the roots club and so forth. There's a third issue that Clem discovered with Mr. McKean, and that is an erosion on his property from the water running off of the parking lot and down over the hill and through an opening in the stone wall, and down that long hill towards the stream at the bottom, and it's really eroding this summer, there's quite a bit of erosion going on in there. So, we just met with Jeff Crosby, and he's gonna work up some ideas about how we can reroute some of that water away from that area and move down the hill without eroding. So, we'll, we'll be working with Jeff and with you folks on that issue, but as far as the logging issue goes, that's a school district problem, we'll take care of it.
Okay. You know, I did meet with the homeowners out there.
Yep.
They seemed pretty cordial, even though somebody had gone on there. One of the biggest things I got out of the husband and wife together when I met them that they would like to have, um, something rectified before people go and clean up on their property.
Now, there's some kind of an agreement.
Yes.
As to what's gonna happen.
Talk to Mr. McKean.
Yeah, what happened is, uh, you know, after the logger had did this, they went over and met with the logger. I don't think he could speak very well, uh, very good English, and the grandson was speaking for him, or the son was speaking for him a little bit, and he said, I'll clean it up, and, and then he went over to see the police chief to make sure nobody went on his property to do anything further until it was rectified, and when he came back, it was all cleaned up, you know? The, the big part of it was cleaned up.
Yeah.
So, now there's just a lot of brush down there. What he doesn't want is somebody else to go there and clean before you guys come up with an agreement. But they seemed pretty cordial to the idea, and I told him some of the things that I had heard through the forestry department, the people at Lean had given me names of as far as, you know, compensating him or whatnot. They, they weren't looking to get a lot, they didn't want the rocks fixed, they didn't want, they know their rocks get scratched and pushed over, they weren't looking for that to be rectified, there's some chips that kind of went over the wall, he didn't say anything about that. He talked about the water, but he said, this is a separate issue, I'm not complaining about that now.
Yep.
And I did see, Jeff showed me where the culvert comes down, it goes all the way along the lower part of the parking lot, and that dumps out his property. Twenty or thirty feet past that is where the school's property goes back down the hill. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of that, it's not much further.
Yeah, I wasn't sure how far back it is that, that our property turns and goes down.
Um, there wasn't a pin on the wall, and what there is on, on the survey of that property, this, that stone wall that we went over.
Yep.
And then it goes down with a barbed wire fence that's in the trees, and then to another wall there.
Okay.
That delineation of where that barbed wire, um, isn't very clear on the ground any longer, 'cause that was so old.
Yep.
It would be my recommendation, if you guys had that delineated, Jeff would know, you know, one more length of pipe or two lengths of pipe further would actually allow the water to go down on the school's property instead of McKean's property. But he was in no way really complaining about that water right now, he said it's a separate issue and...
Yep, and, and as far as the trees, I mean, clearly, he was wronged, it never should have happened, and we will do whatever we have to do to make him satisfied.
Typically, I think a lot of that responsibility does go back on the logger as well, but...
Yep, and, and...
That's up to you guys to work out.
We're working through the garden club, because that's who our agreement was with, the garden club had an agreement with the logger, if they go back that way, whatever, we'll, we'll work that out as a board to Mr. McKean, Mr. and Mrs. McKean's satisfaction.
Just, just for, for the record, when they came to us, just to give us awareness of it, my concern was property damage, and I was reassured that the, the, that this logger had was insured. And so, as far as damage, I don't think it should come on a, you may wanna reconsider where the money to pay for any compensation's coming out of it.
We'll, we'll work that out.
Exactly, I just wanna, I was concerned about that potential happening, and obviously it did.
Yeah, and, and we have a certificate of insurance on file for the water.
Perfect, and I just wanna say thank you for stepping up and putting clarity to this.
Yep. And, and by the way, I understand there was a rumor around about the principal authorized the additional cutting.
Yes.
I spoke with him today, he says 100% wrong, he says he didn't even know what they were doing back there until he went around back today with the police chief to talk about how they're gonna run traffic when school opens again.
Thank you for that.
So, he's not been involved in that at all.
Can I just say that, that no rumor was discussed in town, uh, town property, it's all social media, because I didn't hear any of that at all in this office over there. I just wanna clarify that for the record.
Yep, and I wanna make sure the record understands that you had no involvement at all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There was one other property, but that is before Mr. McKean.
Mrs. Borger, I'll call her.
She was concerned about wetland, and Jeff and I walked over there, and there's no additional water from what you're doing going towards her property that I could see. And now, we do have a letter Lean got from the forester that states that, and she's been given a copy of that, so make sure, Clem, that you have that letter from Lean.
He does have it, and just also, the two emails that came in on Monday prompted me to give her that letter, 'cause she had not received it as of that date, so she is well aware of what the forester has said about any potential runoff, so it may already be resolved, but if she got her receipt called...
And it is, you know, that's McKean's back lot, his second lot that that didn't happen on, so it's way past her property, and there's no new disturbances close to her property.
Yeah, we weren't, we weren't anywhere near their property.
Yeah. So, I think, uh, that's great that you guys are stepping up and taking care of that, 'cause it did come across our board.
Yep. We appreciate your, your collaboration and assisting.
Yeah, and I just rejected this on Facebook, so, not that long ago, but...
Right.
We're still handing out your personal cellphone.
No.
That's all right. Um, I think that's it then, I don't see anything else. I thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda, I guess we didn't have to jump around, is gonna be Don Larson, and he's right here in front of us. So, he's got a cemetery maintenance update for us, and that's great.
Congratulations.
Couple things here.
Get out of here. Yeah. So, you... Good to see you. There you go. You know? What you have before us is projects we've been working on at the cemetery, the Cremains Garden, uh, pretty much complete. We've got five benches there, four of them have been sold, so I only have one left to be available, and that money goes into the general fund, and, uh, benches covers the cost and the engraving, uh, just normal engraving in that. Uh, we're, uh, 42% sold out in the Cremains Garden, we've been selling quite a few, people have seen our postings and stuff like this.
How much are the Cremains Gardens?
Huh?
How much are the lots in the Cremains?
$100. $100 per lot.
The benches were what, a thousand?
A thousand.
1,000 even?
Unless, you know, for normal engraving, they put, you know, Donna Dunn has bought one, she puts daffodils on there, that's in addition too, so, you know, for anything like that, but, uh...
I'm amazed the one that doesn't have a name on it is more sold than the others.
Yeah. It's, uh, like I say, we've been, uh, we've had good response, and, but like they say in the business, when they're gone, they're gone.
Now, are you gonna do another one of these once this is full, or how's that working out?
Well, we've got the pages corner, we've got, uh, quite a few up there, plus we have the four by fours for...
So, this one's right here?
Yeah, right here. Now, in addition, we've completed the road bit out here, if you've probably noticed, with the hard pack on it, and, uh, they couldn't go all the way down to the north in that, because the trucks couldn't get underneath the trees, but other than that, and he spread it as far down as he could. And he said he's gonna come in way under budget, so we...
Talking about that area there?
Yeah. So, uh, he said we came in under budget, so he hasn't given me the new figure yet.
Yep.
Uh, we used the town to purchase the gravel, and that's, so we're getting that price on it, and then, uh, like I say, he was able to do it in a day and change.
Well, nice.
Since you mentioned budget, where are you with your budget?
Uh, we're, we're sitting pretty good. We had, we had it in our budget, we got $2,500 for fence, and this road construction and a couple of other areas that we have money within our budget should take care of it. But we've also raised money, you know, through the raffle and stuff like this, that we've been using for some of our, uh, projects, and that, so, uh, financially, I think we're...
Percentage-wise, where are you with your budget?
Uh, Lean's been on vacation, we're gonna be able to tackle that, but not hurt to get caught up.
Nothing over budget that you're aware of, okay, correct?
No, 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 and, you know, between the, the expendable trust and the, uh, you know, general fund that we, you know, when we sell the benches and stuff like that, the money goes into the general fund, and that, we've got money to work with, we're just trying to get our handle on the, you know, final total.
But even with the expendable fund, you, you must kind of just dip into it at times, right? 'Cause you wanna spread that out over a period of time, you don't wanna go right through, you know, that entire budget.
No, we haven't touched it at all this year, and I don't think we'll have to.
Oh, good.
And, so, now, we're, uh...
Well, it's good, these are nice pictures.
We're trying, we're trying to build it up, and that, but, uh, I think that, uh, for the election coming up, uh, on the eighth, we're gonna just have a booth up there, and the banner has all the information on it, you know, that they can just walk by and then take a sheet, information sheet, and then walk out the door.
I wanna make sure that, that, that potential information may be a question, it's, uh, we may not have any booths at all during the primary, we wanna see how it's gonna go.
He's coming in to meet with us one more time, the moderator has said that, um, at one time he didn't mind having a booth, but he wanted it unmanned, and then...
Right.
I had asked if it was manned, could they have it manned outside, like, right now, it may be a good time of year if it's dry out to have you guys man it outside, whereas, um, in November, it may not be, you know?
Yeah.
And so, we kind of talked about that in the different elections, and we'll take it one by one, but when he comes back in, you know, if the weather is nice, I would think that you guys would wanna have it manned if the town hall drawings are back as well.
But my, my concern is, uh...
Congregation.
Congregation of people, even if you're not manned, you get two people, then you get three people, then you get four people, then they're all sitting around talking, standing around talking, and social distancing is gone, off with one mask, and the thing is, we're defeating the purpose of what we're trying to do, so we may wanna put it on hold for a little bit, so we're, we're thinking about that, I'm thinking about that more and more, and the more I thought about it is, yeah, you may not have it manned, but, hey, this is interesting, hey, Bob, didn't you see this, look at this, you get, then you get congregation, and then you get, it becomes difficult to manage, then you gotta get the police officer there, move along, move along.
I don't sure it's gonna get that carried away, Mike.
Well, the thing is, people do congregate around things, and especially interesting things, and, and I have to say, Don, you make interesting things when you make your moves. And, uh, and that's what I'm afraid of, it was, it was totally boring, people would walk right by. The thing is, if it's too, too nice, people are gonna stop and wanna look at it and, and spend time reading it, and so that's my concern. We're, we're gonna discuss it some more, so just, uh, just put your notes.
Well, basically, what our handout will be is exactly what's on the, you know, it's a copy of the, the banner.
Right.
So, they can just take that and boom, and go, read everything that's on the banner.
Right.
And, uh, you know, we wanted unmanned, my Race Across Dunbarton, that was another one, and I got that set up to be unmanned and just a donation box there, but, you know, let them know, but I can do that inside, outside.
Something you may wanna consider is like a big sign, take one on the way out, rather than having a lot of, a lot of, uh, fanfare to say...
After social distancing, take a banner, you know?
And then they move on, because that's what we're trying to fight. Bob, any comments?
Well, you know, that's, becomes a focal point for, and, you know, the people know each other in this town, and the minute they see somebody you know at the table, and that could draw other people, and, again, you're defeating the purpose of why we're wearing all the protective gear and doing what we have to do with the election.
Right.
So, even if you had some kind of a roof-type tent outside somewhere, you know, unless there's a table where they just grab one and leave.
That's what I was thinking.
That, that's all we're gonna have, because I don't plan on being there, I've already voted, you know?
But it's a matter of if it's a display and people start to look at it, and, you know, you get another person that drops it, like you said, before you know it, you've got people congregating, and they're talking, and, you know, unfortunately, it is what it is, you know? Socially, people that know each other wanna communicate, you know, they're probably all getting tired of wearing masks and stuff.
Leo's got a comment?
Yeah, I guess if that were to go through, and you see congregating, I guess it could be shut down.
That's true, that's true.
And you know, I think a sign maybe up there, Leo, in the same likeness, you know, please no more than 10 people or something, because, you know, people do have meetings and they go to, you know, we just had people talking out here with their masks on in the parking lot here, and you're gonna have some of that regardless, even if there's nothing there.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if you see a group, group of people there, it could be shut down if that's what you want to do, you see, you know, so...
But I like your idea of maybe, uh, not being as spectacular as you have been in the past with your displays, and just make it so, take, take one, please take one, and a handout, I think that would be much better than you take one in and...
Exactly.
Okay?
And I put signs up for social distancing and stuff like that.
Keep out.
Final decision will be made upcoming, the thing is...
'Cause I was at the, when Randy was here at the floor.
Past season, so we...
So, we were, again, so we're, we're thinking about, trying to, we wanna make sure we do the right thing for the community.
Right.
Well, thanks for coming in, Don, you got anything else?
Uh, just that, at Christmas time, uh, I'm gonna line, you know, Race Across Dunbarton, gonna buy extra wreaths so that we can line the fences of all the cemeteries and that, and just make a little more holiday...
Sure.
You know, and, uh, I had some leftovers that I put on this one last year, really, I got a lot of positive comments on it.
Yeah, I think that'll look nice, so...
And, uh, I'll be doing a fundraiser prior to the November election and that, it'll, you know, mail out to everybody, and hopefully we'll get good response on that, so, add more money to the kitty. And, uh, that's it, you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
No, it looks great, and I, I thank you for giving us an update on it, I hadn't had chance to see it, so, yeah, it looks great, and it's nice to see it being taken care of.
Yeah. Yeah, and one other thing, I've got invasive weed, uh, control coming in next week, and they're gonna spray the whole perimeter and everything, so.
Poison ivy?
Huh?
Poison ivy?
Poison ivy, you name it, uh, there's some, uh, robe trees out here that we're gonna mark, and they're gonna spray those, they're growing up in the middle of, uh, you know.
Do you have enough in your fund to do that, Don?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, cause we do have the invasive species.
I was just gonna say that, why can't you, uh, what can you?
You know, we're not using that Gorm Pond anymore, we do have that money in that fund, so.
Well, I'll keep that in mind.
If you, if you run tight on money, that's an avenue we can look into for you.
Okay. But I think we've, we've got it budgeted with the money that we've had coming in from our sales.
I'd rather have it go that way, I guess, in case we do need to jump back on the pond. But, you know, there's a reason we worded it that way, in case we need it in other spots we, you know, use this.
Well, this guy's really good and, uh, and he, he sends us the insurance and stuff like that ahead of time and that, so, uh, uh, first cabin and.
So I'd like to know if he's using Agent, uh, the, uh.
Agent Orange?
Not Agent Orange, the, the other agent, was it Roundup?
Roundup. Um, one other thing is if he could make sure to notify the people in this building so they.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna.
And the butter on that side, I think there's children.
That's the only, uh, butter that we have.
I think so, there's children and there might be children in this.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity.
Can I get the contact information from you, or?
I'll make a note, I'll have a jumery pull something up for you.
Okay, thank you.
Just because we, you know, we just had the situation down there where not all these butters were notified of some work, even though it was well within the realm of what the town can do on the property, they, they would have liked to be notified.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm a little serious too, but I think the butters would like to know what kind of sprays being sprayed.
It's a, it's a, it's a cocktail of Roundup and a couple of others things.
With all the stuff on Roundup, uh, they may wanna be very vigilant to keep their kids in that day, you know?
Well, I think the Roundup probably changed it for them.
It's more for the guy that's spraying it than anything else, but.
I don't think that that's still the case with Roundup. I'm not sure either.
Neither am I, that's what I'm.
But he, he did our, uh, Pages Corner last year.
Okay.
So.
Okay, great.
Thing is, you sure you don't wanna use the natural method? Goats?
Yeah, there's some old goats around here that we could use, right, Bob?
Okay, next one.
On that note, thank you guys.
Have a good evening.
How's Paula doing?
Good, good.
Tell her how.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is to discuss an addendum to our COVID-19 illness policy for town employees traveling outside of New England, Vermont, Maine, Connecticut, or Rhode Island. And, um.
For the record, I think, um, Sergeant Ramilar has emailed us some information regarding this, and I think we should probably adopt a state policy, uh, be consistent with what the state is doing.
Yeah, which, um, just to reference what Mike had is, uh, Sergeant Ramilar gave us some information about the state policy, which we had actually already seen. But we took portions of it out and added it to our policy last time. But we did nothing with the employees voluntarily going out of that, um, New England district or the low. The, uh, the low, who do I wanna say here, Mike, the low, uh?
Non-essential traveling?
Correct, non-essential travel, but the, the states that have a low amount of COVID.
Okay.
So, um.
Low risk.
I'm gonna read this paragraph out of here, and, uh, comes from Chris Ramilar, and, uh, it's basically referencing the state policy. If an employee goes on non-business related personal travel outside of New England, they are mandated to use their own paid time off or unpaid leave upon return to satisfy the fourteen day quarantine. Or they would be eligible for two weeks' paid leave under the family's first coronavirus response act.
But that is for essential workers.
Right, and now, uh, going back here to the, I don't know if I have that right, policy here, let me look back to it. On the second page of this. What's our policy?
You want this one?
There was a paragraph in here.
You want this one?
The paragraph, yeah.
The second paragraph.
That's what I wanted to read. No, that's not the paragraph, I didn't.
It's two paragraphs from the original from Sergeant Ramilar, is that the one you opened at?
Yeah, but that's not worded right. I have that wrong. Lean, was it in your book where I read the state policy?
Um, that's what it was, no, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
It wasn't.
I read the paragraph on the state policy just before we came in here, which clarified, um, three or four different scenarios, and I thought I had it here, but I guess I didn't.
Well, I think the biggest scenario is if it's required versus elected.
Right. And then that paragraph, that's what I thought I was reading through, but he took excerpts out of that, and, um.
But in the state policy, I don't think they have that if you get tested, will you come back?
Right.
And wait for the test results in three days.
I think they're just starting to add that.
You know, I think you're gonna find that that's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, we did see that signature one there, yeah. That's what I wanted to read, I thought I had a copy of that. Okay. In summary, the town may choose to consider two options. Upon employees' return from travel outside of New England, they must self-quarantine for fourteen days and will be eligible for leave under the FFCRA. Or upon employees' return from outside travel of New England, they must self-quarantine for fourteen days and use accrued paid time off or take unpaid leave if no accrued paid time off is available. For what it's worth, the common trend seems to be that municipalities are having employees use their own accrued paid time off for the fourteen day self-quarantine period following voluntary personal travel outside of New England. So that is the original letter that Chris Ramilar had sent to us in tel, in total, which is the governor's COVID-19 two-point-oh policy. And that along with some discussion that Bob is having about if that employee comes back and they get a test back in three days now, or five days, as soon as we get a negative test, they can come back to work.
Correct.
I, I think we should amend that so that we're using it, they're using their own paid time off, or they don't get reimbursed for the time off that they have now. But if they take a test, usually it's been taken about three days, so.
Yeah.
If they get a negative test that comes back negative, then they can return to work.
So in other words, we, we ask them to provide evidence of, of a negative test, they can return to work in lieu of waiting fourteen days.
Right. So Lean, I think I'd like to make a motion to modify our COVID-19 town policy to include, um, paragraph number two, which states that if an employee returned from outside travel of New England, they must be self-quarantined for fourteen days and use accrued paid time off or take unpaid leave if no accrued time off is available. So we'll use that specific paragraph, and, uh, we just wanna make sure that we know that the, uh, the travel is outside of New England and it is voluntary travel.
And as an alternative, COVID testing, uh, evidence of negative COVID test, of COVID tests with a negative result, they could return to back, return to work immediately.
Not immediately, but after the test.
After the test, no, after the test result, after, or they could provide, in lieu of waiting fourteen days, they could provide evidence of a negative for a COVID test.
Correct, to return to work.
To return to work immediately. Would you be agreeing with that, Dave?
I am, um, and I also wanna leave it open that if Lean finds a little bit better wording on that second sentence in the paragraph, we can go ahead and modify it. There may be some state.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
wording that is, uh, more correct that she could reference on there, and I don't mind her modifying it now that she knows our intentions.
And I'd like to make a recommendation that this be sent out by email, we prove it by email. This does give a final, it thumbs up, I don't think we should have to wait two weeks to make a final approval on this.
No, I, I made the motion, I'm just looking for a second now.
Oh, well, I'll second the motion.
So the motion's been made and seconded, and that motion includes Lean having the ability to modify that last sentence.
I'll second that.
I have no problem with that either.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And Lean, we have one employee who's very concerned with that, it was Eddie at the transfer station?
I'll let him.
Please go ahead, no.
We're not trying to be punitive with this, but the fact is, other, other people working around this in the individual neighborhoods that travels out of the New England area is put at risk. And you know, at least that's, we'd settle it for them if they came back negative and didn't have a problem.
I think it's just that we're trying to be, the town officials are trying to be more responsible, responsible to the community and keep it healthy.
Okay, the, um, the other note on this policy from the state, this is COVID-19, we updated change as needed, as it evolves. So that's kind of what we're doing. This might not be the end of changes to come, you know?
No, I know it, cause we don't know what's coming down the pipe.
Okay. That's kind of it on this situation. I'd like to go in, I think, to mailbox items now, unless somebody else has, uh, um, other items. And some of these first items are not really mailbox items, they're more cleanup items that we need to do as a board. Uh, the very first one I'd like to come to is Linda Landry, our town clerk came to me, and, uh, we had, uh, labeled, um, some additional election observers, and they are supposed to be inspectors of the election. During the above referenced meeting, August twentieth, twenty twenty. I mean, August sixth, twenty twenty, uh, we need to correct some meeting minutes. Pam Melioto, Allison Valeries, and Stas Zopas were appointed as election observers, please take note. The correct term is inspectors of the election. The minutes also stated a one-year term, but the term statute is two years. We have new appointment papers to sign tonight, so, um, I'll make this a motion that we amend these and sign these election paperwork to be accurate to the statute. And we are actually only gonna sign two of the people, Stans Opez and Allison Valeries, only because those two were on the checklist from the Democratic Party, and Pam was not at this point. Are you guys good with that? So I made a motion, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
To sign the paperwork.
A little discussion here, I don't think, um, Mr. Zopa is a, uh, Democrat.
Um, he was on the Democratic Party list, I think.
I don't think so.
He'd be a Republican.
Right, he's a Republican.
Okay, she only showed me the Democratic list, so.
Well, that was to point out, you know, as a Democrat, these two are Republicans.
Oh, these are Republicans, okay, so, I guess no party affiliation, whether it's Republican or Democrat. Okay, so I'll modify that motion. Bob, second in the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks for pointing that out, wait.
Okay, boy, you know, calling a Republican a Democrat is pretty.
Yeah, it is.
You're getting trouble.
Okay. I think those two spots are only signatures needed. Lean, I gave you a copy, there's many more copies here. Leo, you're the only public member, would you like a copy of this?
Okay. Fine, thanks.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, staple these all back together with that from after?
Sure.
Even for Lean? Okay, that's one item, town clerk's projections. Okay. Next item I have here is, we spoke at our last meeting about the Dunbar Telephone Company putting fiber optics down to last nine or ten homes on Gorm Pond Road. As doing that, they're going to require three partial or half days, two to four hours of the police department's, um, assistance, where they're gonna have a, uh, an officer there, um, as a special duties officer, waving traffic through. We've kind of went through it, cause they were gonna start this week and spoke, um, to get a consensus in the board, and we agreed that, um, we are gonna waive the portions of that fee that are gonna be, um, available to the telephone company. And the reason we're doing this is that was passed through quickly through all the state signatures, the attorney's signatures, and all of the different telephone companies, uh, that were involved in that, as well as the utility companies. And the reason that was passed through quickly is because with COVID-19, all of these families in these various towns need to have internet service in order to homeschool their kids, and also, a lot of people are doing businesses out of their houses. And we're gonna try and get reimbursed, it looks like seventy-five percent of this cost will be reimbursed back to the town. And I think I did the calculation, it's about seventy-one dollars an hour with all of it. We had already agreed upon waiving the town administrative fees and the vehicle fees for those three partial days that they use it, and now this will take care of the police officer's, uh, payment as well. So I wanted to bring that up, do we still have a consensus, if that's okay?
I just wanna be, um, I wanna be careful here that we don't set a precedent.
Right.
Of, um, of allowing, uh, companies to come in, third-party companies, which are not, they're for-profit companies.
Right.
They make money, um, to come in and take advantage, because they're not taking a pay cut, they're gonna make money, they're getting new customers, and I, I just wanna be careful that we don't set a precedent that, um.
Yeah, this is directly related to COVID-19, so that's what we're gonna state on that.
I'm, I'm a little leery about the whole, uh, scenario, but I was, I'm supporting it because of COVID-19.
Right.
If it was any other thing, I'd be very, very leery, because this is a for-profit company, coming in, asking for, uh, a break on, on what they know would normally pay. If it was any other time, uh, they'd pay it, so I'm, I'm trying to think, geez, what, scratch my head, why, why would they not pay it now?
Right.
Um, what does this have to do with COVID-19? I mean, we're gonna send officers out there, we have lots of resource, we should send officers out there, but they're gonna make money. In fact, they're gonna make more money because then we're not charging them, we're not charging them for the detail. Any other company would have to pay it.
Yep.
So, I, I'm just, I just, for the record, I wanna say, we gotta not set a precedent for the future.
Yeah.
And the other thing that brought this to your attention, there's a possibility, I think it, it is worth reaching out to Granite State Communication and ask them if they would share the cost, cause those clients, we might as well say nine families, are gonna probably get their, their, uh, fiber optic.
You would think they could, yeah.
And, I mean, uh, a lot of times they'll waive, every year if you re-sign, they waive a month off. So, I mean, they might, they might get involved and pay some of it, you know, and then you can collect the rest through Gopher. And it's only cause they're trying to get the rural areas that don't have Wi-Fi, I mean, not Wi-Fi, but fiber optics or, or even, even dial-up.
Right.
You know, they're trying to get them into speed of, so kids can learn at home, people can do business at home. So you may recover the difference on the Gopher, but I think it's worth.
Doesn't hurt to try.
It's worth a phone call to find out is, you know, you're gonna get new, new clients that nobody ever had before. Do you want these people, you know?
Can I ask a question now?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was gonna bring up, it's like, yeah. The phone company is gonna make money on it also, because you need a phone line to get your internet access. So the phone company is gonna make nine new customers, GSI's gonna make nine new customers. So, I understand if you can, if the town can recoup some of that money through the, uh, grant from the, from the feds, but if you can't, then we're stuck holding it back, and they get all these customers that we pay for.
Let me, let me speak to the customer first and let me.
I just do wanna point out, and that's why I provided this to you, is that it was confirmed through the, um, COVID-19 agent that I've been working with, that this is the federally.
It is reimbursable.
Okay, it is reimbursable, but it's on the fed side, so I have to create a whole new account, whole new tracking, and submit my paperwork through a different source, no longer through COVID-19. And the other thing is, is this expires September fifteenth, so I have to track those hours, so they have to be noted separately, so that.
It's gonna happen within the week.
It's gonna happen within the week.
Yeah, some hours are already happening after our consensus talk, so.
You, you know, it may have been nicer to say, um, you paid for it, and if we get reimbursed, we will reimburse you the dollars. In other words, that way the town has no risk at all.
Well, let me, um, let me just go backwards through a couple of conversations I had. I had two or three conversations with the telephone company to try and get people up to speed on, um, putting these nine or ten customers on their books, for one thing, not all nine or ten may or may not take. putting these nine or 10 customers on their books, for one thing, not all nine or 10 may or may not take it, but just to recoup the fiber optics, they're probably looking at somewhere between a thirty or forty-year repayment on running the fiber optics down to those homeowners. Some of them homeowners are gonna pay for some of that going up their long driveways, I'm pretty sure, not a hundred percent positive about that. But, um, there's a substantial cost there, their attorney's fees, just to go between consolidated and them and go through the utility companies and then go through the state and the COVID process are three times their initial projections. This, um, cost to them is substantial and they're trying to help be inclusive of all our town people. So, when you look at the dollar value of that, um, seventy-one dollars an hour times four, eight, twelve hours, we're, we're talking about a thousand dollars, pretty minimal, and we're gonna take seventy-five percent of that back through the COVID. You know, so we're talking a couple hundred dollars to the town's side of it, so.
I thought, may I just comment? I, I thought I had read somewhere that these small communities were going to be eligible to file their costs, their expense through COVID to get reimbursed, no?
The small communities.
Well, they, they mentioned that there was like Lebanon or some other areas that had no internet whatsoever and, and they were.
And that's what they're trying to provide through, because of this COVID.
Right.
I imagine what they're gonna do is they're gonna get the seventy-five percent reimbursement that they're talking about to you, it's probably not a hundred percent.
Yeah.
So, you know, we're, we're talking about something that's a couple hundred dollars. These residents, I think, should be inclusive in Dunbar and, and at one time, just because of the who owned the poles, that section of town didn't become inclusive. There's a couple other ends that I know of right on the border where maybe one customer is not on Dunbar Telephone or two customers, depending on where the roads end, but they do have telephone service and internet through, service through other providers that they're okay with, where that section, they were in the dark zone, there was no good way out for them.
But like Mike said, now, you have a company, how much did GSI have to contribute to all of this?
Nothing, but then again, GSI will only be getting their services once they start providing the service. Like, they, they don't own the lines, they don't own the poles.
Right, but that's who they're gonna get their service from.
Right, and like, well, so we'll make the phone call, I actually don't think that it'll go very far, but it doesn't hurt to call.
It won't hurt to call, I mean.
In fact, I'm gonna make the telephone company do the calls, is what I'm gonna try to do.
You get nothing now, so even if, even if they, I tell you what, you know, it's not a lot of money, but even if they pick up the other twenty-five percent.
Right, because it makes, like Mike said, it doesn't sound like the town is giving something to a business, especially now the town business.
But, you know, at least it is this COVID situation, it's not something, if this wasn't happening during the COVID situation, I think this would be a lot different discussion.
You've got kids in school and people working from home.
Right, because then you're gonna have, every Tom Dickin Harry needs a, uh, police detail, you know, saying, well, you did it, the phone company, you know, you know, we're only doing this for a day or whatever, you know?
It'll be one exception, that's why I don't want to set any precedent, so I, I want to make sure for the record, we not setting any precedent here.
So we're gonna do it under consensus lean, so make sure the minutes reflect that the board has a consensus to go ahead and do that and, uh, I'll call the telephone company myself and ask them to follow up with.
So we just have to make sure that the police department is reporting their hours, that they work for that.
The chief is gonna separate it all up for you, you told me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I still think we, uh, we still incur costs, administrative for those vehicles, I still think we bill for those too.
I think through COVID, we're gonna bill for the entire thing.
As if it were.
If they use a vehicle, I have to, I have to bill them for.
You're gonna bill for the seventy-one dollars an hour.
Yes, definitely.
All right, so if we do end up eating something, it'll be mostly our administrative costs, which we already have somewhat covered anyway, so.
Thank you, Dave.
It is covered?
Well, you repay them, you know, aren't we? Don't work any overtime, will you?
No, I'm only at forty, at thirty-eight right now and I have to go anywhere.
We'll get you out of here. Okay, so I'm gonna put that one to bed.
Leave out the money though, I have to tell you that Granite State, it wouldn't take them very long to recoup that real easy, you know?
I should have probably done this earlier when I saw Linda, but I forgot to. On the way in, uh, the planning board chair, um, and the planning board secretary pulled me over with Bob and said that, uh, they would like to nominate Ron Slobom as an alternate on the planning board. Lee, do you think you could make sure Linda's notified so we get the appointment paperwork signed at our next meeting?
Do we have a term for that or alternates?
I think we'll have to double-check the alternate term with Linda.
Okay.
I thought it was two years, but I don't wanna.
Okay.
We'll correct the minutes again.
Yeah.
I'll do this in town business and I would like to review one other thing, uh. This is going into more of the, uh.
Did, did we get a second on that?
That was just consensus.
Consensus.
For, for an alternate, you don't make a motion?
Oh, no, we're gonna vote on that later, that's not a vote tonight, that's just.
Oh, you just wanted to write the papers, then you're gonna.
Yeah, so Linda will make the papers up and then our next meeting in two weeks will sign it.
Okay, so there's no meeting for the planning board that will be problematic, okay, yep, write the board.
So you give a table out for the next meeting.
Yes. Yeah, I was just more or less to notify the board and, um, I attended my first planning board meeting as the selectmen's rep, so I'm gonna give a report back on the planning board meeting. It went, uh, very well, there was some changes of the guards, uh, after many, many years of being the chair or co-chair, Ken Swayze stepped down as chair, which I think there was some discussion before with Mike about that at an earlier meeting. Chuck Frost took the chair position by a unanimous vote of the board and, um, it was a consultation, George Holt took the co-chair position, uh, which I think he was in prior anyway. And Ken took a secretary position, um, only for the fact that he could stay on as more of the executive committee and try and oversee for a year or two at least to make sure that everything goes smoothly with the, um, with the change of the guard. And, uh, at that meeting last night, it went pretty smoothly. We had a customer come in for a lot line adjustment and, uh, we reviewed that and accepted that and it got put off to the next meeting as a complete application. We also had a, um, three-lot subdivision come in, um, here on Stark Highway North that got, um, accepted and put into the next meeting and one of the most, um, one of the bigger things is we had, we had a, um, applicant come in for conceptual for the Dunbar eighty-eight LLC, and if anybody remembers this, this is the, um, this is the, uh, golf course up here on Route thirteen that they're looking to develop. Couple of the highlights, um, they're looking to put in a boulevard instead of a steady road and a boulevard on that, um, basically consists of two roadways that are twelve or fourteen feet wide with a fourteen-foot or twelve-foot section of grass in the middle of them. So you have one-way traffic on the main road coming down with a lot of open space there. And, uh, they did the cluster homes down below, so they're not actually seen from the road. And they used our open space plan which showed a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage, um, with a few acres of land. And that looked tight with how they're gonna position the houses, so they're gonna come back. That had forty-six homes on that land, which covered fifty-six percent of the land with homes. There's a, it's a two-hundred-and-forty-acre lot, open space was left to a hundred and thirty-five acres. Something I learned new that in our open space planning, the open space land is left so that the owners of that property can use it and it isn't subject to anything in current use, so if somebody else wanted to go on the property, they didn't have to really provide appropriate access because the open space was getting used by all their different residents going through their lots. So I talked to them about possibly providing parking for open space used from the whole entire town at that land of the open space land and they seemed to be in agreement with it. They were looking for two waivers, one at ten percent grade coming in the main road, on a fifteen-hundred-foot section of it. And the other one was the boulevard instead of one road. And, um, we didn't vote on it because it was conceptual meeting, but the board gave kind of a thumbs up on those two waivers in lieu of making the lots a little wider down in the bottom portion of the property. Because even though it's allowed in our zoning with a hundred and twenty-five feet and forty-foot and forty-foot setback, you take eighty feet out of the one-twenty-five, it's hard to position, um, a large home on that lot without turning the home. So, the developer realized that and they're gonna be working through that process, but they made, uh, some light in coming into the, um, zoning board for variance to that forty-foot setback. The board seemed to be against that at this time, but again, this was just a preliminary conceptual consultation. After that portion of the meeting was done, the board had discussion on a meeting that Mike set up, um, in reference to Kelsey Road and several members, um, spoke up in reference to how they had been doing these and the board unanimously decided, and I abstained from the vote, to go to all conceptual meetings in front of the entire board. In other words, they didn't want partial boards meeting with members of the public on a plan, whether there was or was not a plan and giving input from just a couple of members and so.
Dave, could you clarify Mike, Mike who?
Mike Kaminski.
Okay, he's, he requested the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
So, um, so, um, in that, the road agent didn't want to go to a meeting that wasn't part of a regular conceptual meeting in front of the planning board. The chair didn't want to go and it was brought up by several members that in this process, they seen it happen before, where after a meeting like that, there was emails going back and forth from the applicant or the applicant's attorney or the surveyor and then it would come in front of the board and there was a lot of discussion that happened that the board was not aware of and the board seemed unhappy with how that was going. And they made kind of a, a motion last night that since they now, we have Donna in here as a planning, zoning, and building coordinator, she is gonna be the one that looks at the applications to see if they are, um, if they meet our zoning or planning ordinances and so if they're gonna be accepted to the meeting or not accepted, so she's gonna do that review. And then if somebody wants to come like this builder did last night for conceptual, the board is all over that, but they want a full board present, they don't want any more small ones, so. That's how they voted to do that, so now, I didn't know if you wanted to notify the other or if you wanted Donna.
I got word of it today, I've already modified what Donna's gonna do. The thing is, um, I want for the record, um, the current chair, the previous chair of the planning board requested that I arrange a meeting and so I was acting on the request, on a request from the planning board, it wasn't my initiative.
Pulled that back last night.
Understood, so be it.
All right.
But, the thing is, in all fairness to the, uh, the history of the applicant, the applicant had previously put in for a subdivision. It was a terrible application in the sense that it was incomplete.
Right.
And so my goal here, uh, I told Donna that, uh, all those participants that we had, I'm gonna, I told her, we can retract them all. She can meet individually as the planning board chair to talk procedures, not concepts for procedures. Some of the procedures have changed since this person's.
And that's her job to do, yeah.
So I reaffirmed with her that she's gonna contact those parties involved, the, uh, the applicant's lawyer, the applicant if it need be, and she will meet and get the requirements, what they want, and she'll give her, give them an offer. They can either meet with her, meet, get the procedures down, just procedures, and then if they want to do a conceptual, we'll be there at their request.
That's right.
And that's how we're gonna proceed.
Yep.
And that's how I talked to Donna this afternoon, based on what I heard from Donna this afternoon. We put our heads together, we said, well, this is where we're going, we're gonna meet with the, what the planning board wants to do. And, uh, but the thing is, I, in the middle of this, for the record, I'm being jerked around a little bit and I didn't appreciate that. I thought my time is valuable too. Here I was asked by the chair of the planning board to create this meeting with these key participants and last night I get, I find out that the chair makes a comment, the previous chair, that he didn't even want to attend, well, I'm getting up to here with this and I'm not gonna put up with this from the planning board.
Yep.
Uh, my time's valuable too.
Right.
Donna's got her marching orders and I'm gonna leave it at that, I think she's, she's happy with that. I think we're very compliant with the, um, the request of the current board. As, as we requested last night, so I, I just felt I was jerked around with this process and I'm not gonna put up with it.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the chair wanted to make sure, he said, it didn't come directly from me, but he agreed with it, um, not meaning me, him, and, uh, but anyway.
The current chair?
Not the current chair, the previous chair.
Well, uh, previous chair for the record was Ken Swayze and the thing is, he was the one who requested from me that I go forth with this. And then, three days before it's gonna occur, oh, stop, stop, well, my time's valuable too.
Yeah, so anyway, they had this meeting set up, half the board members thought it was a board of selectmen thing and half of them thought it was a planning board thing, I said, the board of selectmen don't have any deal with this issue, it's a planning board issue, they need to go there, I said, it's nothing to do with us, nobody's asked us for any meetings, I said. They asked Mike as a planning board representative to head that meeting.
And I was an alternate and the thing is, for the record, they would have asked you, but Dave's an imputer, for the record, Dave's an imputer, so he.
I would recuse myself.
He'd have to recuse himself, so I was picked up as the alternate and for the record, I, I invited Bob just to let him know, I gave him situational awareness of what was going on. He said, charge on Mike, since I'm the alternate.
Yeah.
And so, but.
And Mike gave me a heads up to it too, I didn't have any problem, I did not vote on their vote last night, but it seemed to be.
You can see where I'm getting a little, I was a little bit peed off, peed off this morning, or this afternoon, when I heard of this, or this afternoon, but the thing is, uh, but I'm working with Donna to make sure that we're complying with the wishes of the planning board. But the thing is, I'm not gonna fall for this again, fool me once, but not twice.
Right. So anyway, it seemed to be, uh, something that was on the planning board's agenda for a long time, but they never really made a commitment to how they were gonna do this. Now, I did say in those meetings, our old planning board didn't have somebody like Donna to organize this through all the different people who've had her job, but now there is a person there that's laying this stuff all out, doing a good job of it, so. She's wanted to do her job, but she hasn't been able to because other people were involved in it, but now, so she's gonna do that step and they're gonna go through and if somebody comes in front of the planning board, it would be the entire board out of conceptual. No more three or two.
Well, what you have is you have an executive committee of the three people and, um, I, I, I like the way it's going, I like the plan, but the thing is, uh, I was caught in the middle because I had two chairs.
We're caught in the middle of the old and the new.
Yeah, and the thing is, I didn't appreciate that, because my time's valuable.
Yeah.
I may be, uh, semi-retired, but the thing is, my time's valuable.
But there was some deep feeling, you know, Jeff really didn't understand why we're having the meeting, our road agent, Brian Pike said, you know, I hate looking at these old emails, I don't know what went on because it's only a partial email. So he was very, um, very enlightening about it, I guess.
Well, the thing is, the original, uh, thing is, uh, you know the controversy on Kelsey Road. I wanted the road agent in there because, um, the one thing that we did as a board, when we did the exercise with some of the other roads in town, uh, Gini Road and with Everett Road, we know that once you establish a road, the road is probably the most costly thing in any subdivision.
Right.
And those have to be stipulated and the standards have to be followed, you just can't say, I'm gonna create this path down here. No, it's gotta meet standards and that's the reason I had to order you in.
The only, the only other thing I saw was, the board also didn't understand how there could be a meeting when there's not even a conceptual plan to look at. They don't have a plan in front of them to look at, so how are you gonna have a meeting when you don't even have a plan to look at, even a conceptual? Like, they, these people brought a conceptual plan, they knew it probably wasn't gonna go the way they did it, but they did it by all of our ordinances, knowing that most likely they'd lose on one.
Originally it was almost a pre-conceptual plan and, uh, I'll be honest with you, Dave, they were concerned that you as an imputer in the applicant, they had some bad blood there and they thought they were gonna be given the short end of the stick because of that relationship. And I reassured them that the planning board, they have me there as an alternate, so when a situation arises, they can call upon me as an alternate.
Yep.
And I reassured the lawyer that it was not gonna be allowed to happen. Dave can, I said, reassure her that Dave can participate, but he'll participate as an imputer.
Yep.
And I assured, it's gonna be fair and above board. And, uh, I, it was more a, you know, very high-level, high-level pre-concept. Donna requested plans from them and to this day we got none. So at this point, I said, with no plans, we really have nothing to go on and if we had plans, we'd probably go to the conceptual. I said, so without the conceptual, let them come in and, and the thing is, you can even do it via telephone if you want because lawyers cost money to have them come in, I'm trying to save the applicant a few dollars too. Maybe they can talk about the procedures over the telephone.
Right.
And so I'm giving her the option, I'm not micromanaging Donna, she, she's a, she's a power unto herself, let her figure out the best way of doing it.
And as you know, she wasn't always allowed to do all of her position.
Well, she's, she's new and she's, I think she's got enough experience in this town to understand, uh, some of the nuances.
Anyway, the last thing I have on here is Bobogue Road in Bo, there's a road off it called Peaslee Road. Um, that road has that boulevard strip in it, if we wanna go look at it. The boulevard strip in that one is inverted, and they have learned that that doesn't work, or they'd like to make this one a crowned grass area in the middle. But, um, that Peaslee Road is a development that the builder Bob Pike has done, and he said he'd be more than willing to have people drive through.
I'm just not curious, how did the road agent feel about the road?
This road?
Yeah, the proposal, the, uh, boulevard.
He seemed to like the boulevard. He, uh, he had no issue with it. And, um, the biggest issues came up with the narrow lots, even though a hundred and twenty-five feet is allowable in our zoning. When you take the forty-foot setbacks on each side, it doesn't leave you much width for a house in the garage.
Small house, small garage.
And so. Um. Even though that a hundred and twenty-five feet was allowable, they thought, the board thought that, you know, uh, when that was made up, they probably didn't think it through all the way, so there's probably gonna be some open space adjustments after this application. This is probably one of the largest developments they've seen come through the boards.
Is it, uh, general housing open for a public housing, not senior?
Not senior, and, uh, it's gonna be, uh, fairly nice homes. More like your development, I would say.
Or overlook.
Yep.
So overlook was a little pricey on that.
Right, and, um, just to go off the grade, overlook has much more grade, uh, than this job for a much longer period of time. So the grade wasn't a big issue for the road agent, and the boulevard didn't seem to be because you have one-way traffic going.
Now, they asked for a twenty percent wa- a waiver for a twenty percent grade and entry?
Uh, no, ten.
But the thing is, is that a state, uh, entryway or is it?
No, it wasn't on the entryway. It was more down on the, on the property.
Okay, okay.
It was on the main road going down to the development. So it was kind of an interesting meeting and a lot that, uh, adjusted and clarified, and, uh.
How, how school board to hang on?
So that's all I had from the meeting I had last night.
Another bond coming up.
Um. Going through this stuff, um, I got a note from Linda on the way down the hallway. Absentee ballots for this, um, election are already at two-hundred-and-eight for the September, um, ballots, and the general election were already at two-hundred-and-twenty-five. So that's absentee ballots. Um, there was some discussion. Uh, we got some paperwork. I think Lean sent it out on a grant to apply for, for anything to do with our, um, voting at those two. And Rainey talked to me, and he said that, you know, we would possibly have about four or five hundred dollars worth of postage on both of the elections additional. And I told him the amount of work that I've seen Lean going through to get this COVID money, writing a grant to try and get some money for it, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense for four or five hundred dollars. I wanted to get a consensus from the board. Now, this is just paying for additional expenses we have. And the only expense that Rainey thought he could come up with was the additional ballots, absentee ballots. And I said, well, what would that be above and beyond? He says, well, probably a max of four or five hundred dollars in postage.
Just to mail out.
And I thought it was way too little of money to have Lean go through all that grant writing.
Um, that's, I think that was part of that COVID nineteen where you had to estimate what your projection was from.
No, this was a different one. It was just a grant on the elections.
Okay.
And consent out, but I don't think as a board Lean, we're gonna, we're gonna try and recap this money because you're gonna put in more than four or five hundred dollars worth of work. If you took your hourly fee, it doesn't make any sense to work backwards to get that money back.
And so we're very good at working on the telephone companies.
Right, I mean, this is, you know, this is writing a grant and sending in all the paperwork, so I just, I can't see.
Is that what Rainey sent to you guys?
Rainey did send it to us, yes. I believe you had already sent it, uh, several weeks before, though.
There's no, nothing else you can think of that, is there?
Nothing, so. I wanted to bring it from the entire board and see what you thought, but I told him at this time, I didn't think it was enough value with the amount of work I've seen her have to go through.
So we're gonna pay hazardous pay for the people if they come votes too?
Yep. Uh, but if you guys change your mind, I guess, this.
You said it's two-oh-eight and two-twenty-five so far?
Yeah, absentee ballots, but two different elections. Now, they always have a certain amount of them. When he was giving me the four or five hundred dollar amount, he was talking above and beyond what they normally do, so whatever COVID was above a normal.
Oh, it's a difference. It's like what we did with, uh.
Yes.
With the transit station.
So you're deducting a standard one. It's not all the ballots, so.
That's not even worth it.
Right.
I agree with, I, what we're talking about, Bob, is stamps to mail out, the, the absentee ballots.
Right, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the number. You're, you're talking about four-hundred-and-thirty-three ballots is right now.
Right.
And he said sixty-five cents, so you're not even coming close to the five hundred.
Right, but, and, and they hope to come up with a lot more, but they may not, you know?
And you have to sub- deduct what we sent out last year.
And you have to write a grant for this money. This isn't, like the stuff she's doing now, you write it up and we get the money back. It's a lot of paperwork, but this one, you write a grant up, and then they either accept or deny your grant. So that's what I was.
I mean, I can look into it, but I've got a lot on my playground.
I think, I think we're just gonna pass off on this one for now. That's all we can come up with for expenses.
Yeah, I, I, what's that?
I don't think it's worth pursuing.
Oh, it's not worth pursuing through the, through the.
Grant.
Grant, but, uh, what I'm saying is, it's not a whole, you're talking about if it stayed the same, even if it went up, you're still gonna be, I still think you're gonna be under five hundred dollars.
And it's the only amount it goes up to, you know, Bob, it's not.
So. It probably isn't, it isn't, it's a lot of work to chase, you know? Cause you gotta get approved too.
Right.
Okay. Um, in the mail box, we received a couple of emails. One was from Beth Bogart. We already spoke about tonight. Uh, she was concerned about the garden project and the timber cup for the additional water on her property, runoff water.
I'd like to make a recommendation that when you get any further correspondence, just pass it on to the, uh, school board.
Yep. I think that's right, and, uh. And just an FY, FYI, uh, Mary from the, uh, library director, uh, she gave us another note regarding the peeling paint on the library fire escape. We kind of didn't know that was gonna not last forever, and, um, I think that at this point, we're not gonna chase somebody over that black paint because that's gonna be replaced at some point.
And that was just a temporary fix.
And he told us that upfront, you know? So I think he did come back and patch it one time already, so I don't think we're just gonna keep. If it was the building, that'd be a different story.
He already guaranteed it for eleven years.
Yeah, he did. Not the fire escape, thank you.
Well, he didn't ex- he didn't exclude it though. If you look at the, uh, the building, it didn't exclude that.
Um, that's the paint. We did that one already. Okay, Lean was nice enough to put a, uh, reevaluation change of the property taxes together. It looks like we had an increase of new value changes of seventy-three million, four-hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
That's correct.
Um. The school, um, was at point seven-one, uh, decrease.
Seventy-one cents, yeah. So I did the calculations with their operating budget, plus their revenues, and they were potentially gonna see a seventy-one cent decrease on their side.
And the town had a ninety-nine cent decrease.
That's correct.
For a total decrease of one-point-seven-zero. And, uh, she gave us a proposed new tax rate of twenty-five-point-five-one.
That's what, what we know, so it.
Estimated to date.
Excluding the county tax and the state school tax, which we don't know, um. I don't, I'm not exactly sure how that works with the new revenue, if they take that under advisement and theirs will go down, or if it's just completely separate and their operating budget reflects their rate entirely, so I'll have to read.
And we, we could be slammed, we're, I know.
Yeah, they don't typically go up to more than like twelve cents, two to twelve cents each, but you just don't know.
So anyway, Mike alluded to it previous meeting, the last item I think we're waiting from, from the government, from the state, is the meals and room tax, and hopefully that doesn't hit us too hard so that we can.
Right. Yeah, I, the amount, you, we talked about how many dollars in taxes. How many dollars do we get? Was it like a hundred and for room and meals?
We typically get around a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
So if they're down half, that's a sixty thousand dollar hit to the budget.
It's still, I don't think it's a huge hit, but it was something we have to watch.
Yeah. Right now, we're looking good for our highway block rent. That's not gonna be affected. I don't know how this is gonna affect our, uh, flood control budget.
But flood control means Massachusetts, as long as the state doesn't take it from us.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
Either way.
That's all I have. I'd like to go back to Leo for public comment to start.
Thank you.
Nothing for Leo, it's from town administrator.
No, I just have a discussion in non-public.
Okay, bringing it back to the board, Mike?
Uh, energy committee met this week. Uh, Dana LaVoy is the, uh, point of contact for this town dealing with the energy, uh, company. He's working on three issues. One's been resolved. He's working on two other issues, minor issues, but he's working with them. Um, I say for the record that, uh, he is the point of contact. There is no other point of contact. Everything's gotta go through him. All, all parties know for now, have been contacted, and he's working that aggressively. On a side note, he's, uh, uh, I've asked him to, uh, they were thinking about putting a solar project behind the school, the tree stump. Um, but the thing is, uh, with all, with COVID and everything else going on, uh, it was a consensus of the energy committee that they're gonna defer that. Keep talk, keep the lines of communication open to the school board, but defer that for maybe the, uh, the year, next year, for any action.
Bob, coming in for the board?
Yeah, I actually, I finally got Tri-State out in front of the library.
Oh, good.
And I talked to a Matt Carr, and, uh, at first, he was a little interested when he first got here. He told me it was gonna be about fifty thousand or more, which is kinda the discussion I had. That's kinda what I had thought, you know? But then the more he looked at it, and he really doesn't have the equipment, so he kinda conceded that it's, he does flat work, you know, slabs and aprons and stuff. So that's what they do mostly. So they don't have equipment to shore anything up. They might have to partner with someone. He doesn't think it's worth their effort. But he's supposed to get me in touch with a contractor and where that may be able to do that type of work, so I'm just waiting to hear from that person and have him come out. You know, but it may end up involving.
Two companies.
Two companies.
A devil company and.
You know?
I thought that might be the case, but.
Okay, you know, we have a, um, right now, money's tight, but we still, we still have a line item for maintenance, and we haven't tackled it that much this year.
I was hoping to work on that sprinkler system if that project goes on to.
Right.
And then work on that next year when I was.
But if we could, if we could, uh, think about in the future, take some of that money and get one contract started before December.
Yeah, I would like to try and.
And get the money committed.
Yes.
Right, but as far as this project here, even when this other person comes to look at it, was probably busy, and that's probably why he hasn't, we haven't, uh, connected yet. But you're getting late into the year, and unless you have a real good winter.
Yeah.
It's gonna be tough for somebody.
No, that, that was the next year project.
Yeah, I'm saying the next year, Bob, but we could save some of the money out of the current year budget.
If we get something.
If we get a contract.
Yeah.
For next, next, for next summer.
Bid.
A bid.
If you get a bid, right.
Yeah, that's the only thing we have to ask for, is a bid.
But, uh, in talking to them, there's not a whole lot of companies now that do all of that work at all, so.
Or something we can keep it.
Do we wanna try to put a bid together, Bob?
Not for that portion. I wanna do the top first if we can.
Okay.
Because that will be less relevant than the sprinklers, because without the sprinkler, you couldn't use the other room.
Okay.
So. We'll go that, and then yours next year, hopefully, and then.
Right, well, you know what, it, I'm, I'm gonna keep looking to find someone that, cause what, right now, what we're looking for is just a ballpark number.
Right.
So, and then we'll have something to work with.
To budget.
To create an RFP with, you know?
Right.
But right now, we don't have anything. Somebody could come in at least and look at it a lot closer than, like I said.
And we'll have a better idea for maintenance fund for next year.
Not, not for this year, you think we're gonna get the fire, I mean, fire sprinkler system?
That's what I'd like to do, and I've kinda dropped the ball a little bit, but I've got.
No, but we get time. The thing is, uh, we don't wanna expend the budget right now, if, I mean, I'd say.
No, they wouldn't get to it till fall if we started it right now anyway, even with the budget process, like she said, the bid process.
But even if we went through the bid process, if we just could commit the money to a contract this year, and then do it in the spring, I have no problem with that.
And that's one of those jobs that they could even do in the wintertime.
Exactly.
Right. And it might be a great job for the wintertime when they slow down, so.
Yep.
I will, uh, I will start working on that. I've got a couple of fire companies that I should work on it with. Okay, that being said, um, I'd like to see a motion here, Mike, to do a non-public if you're on.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to go non-public for RSA ninety-one dash Alpha.